Welcome to the August 5th Planning Commission meeting. All members are present. Would like to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Vice Chair Brand would like to make a statement. Thank you.
Yeah, just very quickly, I think we just wanted to, I'll speak for myself. The, with the death of Ruben de Silva, his family shared a really nice message on social media today. And I just wanted to share that, you know, our thoughts are with the family. And as a, they wrote a very nice thing in there. His legacy and the memories we've all shared at Rubiano's will continue to live on through the dishes we continue to serve and the beverages we cheers in his honor. So it's just a really sweet moment. Thank you.
Thank you for that sentiment. All right. So we'll go into public comments. Per the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated, or if approved by the chair. It'll do five minutes tonight. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission, and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Public comments via Zoom are not allowed in the general public portion. Public Zoom comments are only allowed on items. Thank you. April?
Through the chair, we only have one general public speaker card. There is no name, though, so whoever filled that out, go ahead and spit.
I did not do that on purpose. Good evening, y'all. God in heaven, y'all. I just left my grandkids, or they left me, so I was able to make it. Just really quick, and I wanted to put it on the record for what it's worth. I know there's something that will be discussed tonight. But the city, by and large, both planning and the council, at least over the six years that I've participated, there have been decisions made, design builds approved, statutes changed, that seem to be inconsistent. Tonight, and I know you're limited, but I will discuss tonight a little later on. My point is, for those who think I'm anti-business, I am not. I am pro-business. I am on social media, the person that fights for the quick stop. Because they were there before any groups or residents who prefer not to have smoking. So I am pro-business. I am also pro-following the rules. Various statutes and zones and things like that are put in place for a reason. And I think those reasons, such as, and I'll talk about quick stop, because then I don't have to worry about the other one. But they're there for reasons. And if they are abiding by the rules, the zones and the statutes, regardless of the type of business, then we shouldn't, or we should at least consider grandfathering. Because if you build something around an established company, whatever that company is, could be a rucking yard, could be a smoke shop, could be a tattoo parlor. But if you just unilaterally or arbitrarily decide, oh, I'm anti-smoking, therefore, let's close them down, as opposed to a new business trying to come in. And that, when you hear me argue for or against, and a lot of times it's against, but it's usually because it's something that either didn't follow the rules or should not be considered a special exception. I know it's difficult, particularly the last time when the council basically said, you guys were wrong, and overturned a very well-thought-out position. I also have stated for the record, and I'll state it here too, that I have put my concerns in writing to the district attorney. And I'm following every avenue that the Brown Act allows me to follow. So I'm glad you, five or four, did what was the right thing. You held feet to the fire. They didn't follow the rules. And so Supervisor Burgess, Antonio Orlemans, reap what you sow. Talk to you in a minute.
At this time, we have no other speaker cards for those for general public comment.
Thank you, April. Moving on to the consent calendar, our next item is the consent calendar. There's one set of minutes for the regular meeting of June 3rd, 2025. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So now we're going to move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, item E1. This is an amendment to the downtown specific plan, SPA 25-001, and the Brentwood Municipal Code to allow tattoo parlors as a permitted use, subject to administrative design review. Staff report, Eric?
Thank you, Chairperson Flora, members of the Commission. Good evening to you. Before I get started, I just want to briefly introduce our new Assistant City Attorney. And I think you each had a quick moment to meet her and shake her hand before the meeting started. But this is Brittany Brace. She started with the city back in May, and this is her first official sit-down meeting here in the chamber with the Commission. And we're looking forward to having her in future meetings. So, that being said, I've got a map up on the screen which shows the downtown specific plan. I do not have a traditional PowerPoint-type presentation that I'm going to be clicking through. So I'm just going to be talking to you for a couple of minutes, and with a little bit of background and kind of how we got to where we are here tonight. So the downtown specific plan was originally adopted by the council back in November of 2005, just about 20 years ago. It's been amended a total of four times since then, including back in June of 2014, to address a council strategic initiative that at the time included, among other things, identifying a list of prohibited uses or uses of particular concern. And one of those was tattoo parlors. Fast forwarding to late January of this year, Vice Mayor Pearson and Councilmember Orlemans brought forth a future agenda item request to the council for the purpose of potentially allowing tattoo parlors. Prior to the meeting and during the meeting, there were a significant amount of public comments, submitted both in writing and verbally at the meeting. The majority of those comments were in support of allowing tattoo parlors. This did lead to a pretty lengthy discussion by the council. And there were differing opinions, of course, and differing levels of support for amending the specific plan. Ultimately, at that time, the council unanimously adopted a motion to have staff go back and spend time and resources on an item, bring it back for future additional consideration. That motion also included direction for staff to provide background information, excuse me, on both the pros and cons of allowing tattoo parlors in the downtown. So this was done at the end of May. It took about four months to get it back to the council. It was on May 27th. At that time, there were additional written and in-person comments provided, all of which at the time were in support of a potential amendment. This again triggered a lengthy discussion by the council. And ultimately, a 3-2 vote was passed to direct staff to amend the specific plan to allow tattoo parlors as a permitted use, subject to administrative design review approval. So staff went back and prepared the amendment, consistent with that direction. I'm going to summarize what the changes to the text mean. Primarily, there are clarifications to the administrative approval process, and including tattoo parlors as uses that do qualify. We also made some minor, non-substantive technical changes to things like section numbers and punctuation, just to clean up the document a little bit. Staff also removed the phrase "similar uses" to the approval of the zoning administrator throughout the list of permitted uses in each district zone to further limit discretion and remove any ambiguity. Added tattoo parlors as permitted uses in several of the district zones, and correspondingly removing them as prohibited uses, and then leaving tattoo parlors as prohibited uses, sorry, in remaining district zones. So staff prepared a redline version of the proposed changes so that they could be easily reviewed by the Planning Commission and the public. Those were included as attachment four to the staff report. The changes in and of themselves are pretty straightforward, and they're consistent with the direction provided by the council. One thing that was not discussed by the council, but that staff felt was important, is what district zones to permit the tattoo parlors in. And that goes back to the earlier point I made. Given the variety of zones, and those are, again, depicted on the screen in front of you in the different colors, and their different locations, purpose and intent, staff did not recommend, or does not recommend, making tattoo parlors permitted across the board. Rather, staff recommends that they be limited to the downtown core, which is that red area in the middle of the specific plan. And then the downtown general, which is sort of the light purple, pinkish color, as well as the downtown boulevard, which is the darker purple color, and the western gateway, which is the kind of gold or yellowish color at the bottom. So the areas that would be preserved in terms of prohibiting tattoo parlors are the civic center zone, which is the green area, which is basically where we're sitting right now. The civic core, which is the blue surrounding area. And then, of course, the residential areas, which are the lighter yellow, kind of off to the right on the map. I also wanted to point out that we received three additional public comments, combining yesterday and today, after the packet was published last week. One of those comments was in support of the amendment, two or not. And those were forwarded to the Commission today. And then from a sequel perspective, staff is recommending that the amendment be exempt from sequel pursuant to Section 15061B3. And I'll conclude with the recommendation at this time, which is to adopt a resolution. The resolution, the resolution-
Eric? Do you have any clarify, does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff? We'll start on the right tonight. Anita? Pastor Roberts?
Not at this time. No, I do not.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Vice Chair Brand? Any questions?
I think the only one was the revision count. I saw three, but then it sounded like the fourth was in '08, right? With the Civic Center? Or sorry, that would have been the first revision. '08, 2014, 2016, 2017? Did I get that right?
Did I say there was only three amendments?
No, you said there were four. I just wanted to double-check. Because on the...
Yeah.
On the cover, it doesn't say the '08 one, but I don't...
Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah, you're right. There have been four amendments over the years. The first was in '08 for the Civic Center. The second was in '14, which is the one I have referenced for prohibited uses. In '16, it was to accommodate the new library.
Right.
And then in '17, it was for the parking regulations. So there are four.
Right, right. Okay, yeah. It's weird, the DSP doesn't say that on the cover for the '08 one, that's all.
Got it.
Thank you for clarifying.
No problem. Thank you.
And Commissioner Johnson?
That just happened. So the DSP is, you said 2005? And then the four amendments that we just went over? You also mentioned, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that the planning did not recommend doing a wholesale review of tattoo parlors, like putting the... allowing everyone to have it.
Correct. And again, the reason is that when the council discussed this, both in January and then at a greater level of detail in May, the council did not contemplate what district zones specifically tattoo parlors should be permitted in. But when staff went back and was actually processing the amendment, writing the staff report, looking into the plan, it was staff's determination that it would not be appropriate to allow them as permitted uses throughout the entirety of the plan area, just given on, or based on how some of those district zones are set up. For example, here in the Civic Center, it doesn't make sense to allow tattoo parlors or in a residential area.
All right. So at this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant. We don't have an applicant tonight doing...
The city is the applicant.
So we'll go straight to public speakers. April?
At this time, Chair, we have several speaker cards. We'll start with Tom Gregory.
Good evening, everybody. So I wasn't planning on coming down here tonight. And then I saw a social media post by a gal that is posting lies about this. And I believe this gal likes to regurgitate some of the lies and misleading comments that Councilmember Mendoza makes about me. I just want to say, none of you are on the take. Nobody in city council is on the take. I'm going to be as polite as I can. Some of these knuckleheads that imply our council's on the take have no concept of Brentwood. I've been in Brentwood in business in downtown for 30 years. I'm 53. Prior to that, I went to school in downtown Brentwood. Brentwood Elementary, to Liberty, Karen, Edden Hill. I care about downtown. Any knucklehead that thinks that I would need assistance to rent the only available square footage in downtown Brentwood, a 650-square-foot spot, they think that I need to bribe a council member or I need to lobby council members for assistance in renting the only available space in our downtown community? Complete morons. And to insinuate that anybody on council, again, me and Councilmember Mendoza obviously dislike each other, that's another topic we'll bring up again later. But she's not on the take. None of those people are on the take. I appreciate what you guys are doing. The reason I came down tonight was because I got pissed off. So this Cinciana, I use names when somebody just blatantly lies, posted something to the effect about this topic that one of the council members is the attorney for the landlord. There's nobody that works for the city of Brentwood on council, on planning, any branch that has ever been an attorney for me or is currently attorney for me. This just, I mean, I feel like this is the Trump world, right? Politicians can make up lies. The community can come up here and insinuate, you poor guys are on the take. None of you guys make enough money, but none of you guys are on the take. That's a complete nonsense. It's irritating that these people come up here and insinuate that. There's no proof, but that's the world we live in, right? The President of the United States can make up anything he wants to sell his story. Unfortunately, so can some city council members. The other thing on here is, that she posted was, one, one of the attorneys is, or one of the city officials is my attorney. Not true. Councilmember Mendoza stated that the DBC asked me to not put a tattoo parlor in downtown Brentwood. Conversation never took place. Absolute lie. But these are friends of mine. Astray has been a friend of my youngest stepdaughter for 20 years. So did I want to help them build a business in downtown Brentwood? Of course I did. Did I need help to rent that spot? Of course I didn't. There were people lined up to get that spot. But I also, as Councilmember Mendoza stated, just went with the highest bidder, right? That's all these landlords want. All they care about is money. Also not true. Nobody I rented that spot to pays what I was offered to rent it for. I chose people I like, and I did business with people I liked that I thought would be good tenants, right? That's how we base our lies. We do business with people we like. So I'm just here tonight to put some of the facts straight on this thing. I appreciate everybody up here. Everybody in the city of Brentwood is awesome, always has been. I don't always agree with you. You might tell me no. But every person I've ever done business in city of Brentwood, minus the count one council member, let's be clear, one, has always been fantastic. Again, you don't give me the answer I want to hear sometimes, but I'm okay with that, right? It's just business. Nobody that works for the city, I mean, you're emotionally invested, but you're doing the best of your ability for your job. When people are like, oh, that damn, you know, city official or whatever. It's their job. They don't, they don't, you guys aren't anybody here doing anything because they dislike somebody, right? So I appreciate everyone's work, everybody at the city. In my entire life of doing business here, I've been in downtown Brentwood pretty much seven days a week for the last, I'm 53, so we'll just call it 52 years, right? Everybody at the city of Brentwood's always been fantastic, minus one council member that I'm having issues with. And again, we'll bring that up later. But thank you guys tonight. The tattoo parlor's great. In my opinion, it should be listed between jewelry store and art studio, right? It's not the 1950s where, or whatever, when it's going to be a biker club. These people run a beautiful business. It's a beautiful family. I've gone to family events with their parents, their weddings. I mean, I know these people. These aren't just somebody that I picked out of the sky and put in my building. I chose who I wanted to. That building was vacant for seven months, while I chose who I wanted to go in there because I knew they'd be good for Brentwood. I know they're not food. I know they're not entertainment. I get it. We talked to the DBC. We're all on the same board. A lot of people aren't excited about the entities that are in there today. But I can tell you that those business owners are extremely excited to be...
The speaker's timer has expired. Our next speaker is Chris Juarez.
Good evening. I'll have to apologize. I'm very nervous when it comes to this. So my name is Chris Juarez, and...
Sir, if you would be more comfortable, there's a button right there that you can use to make the podium go up.
Can I be honest? I've always wanted to push this button.
Go for it.
It's a small thing, right? So along with my wife, we own the tattoo shop that all this is about. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. I mean, we've been coming to these for, I think this might be like our 16th or 17th time being here. I just kind of wanted to reiterate some of the stuff. We have a petition that was made for the residents of Brentwood that we have over, I won't say over, close to 1,000 signatures in full support. Along with that, we made a separate petition for specifically the downtown businesses to see if they would support us or see if they wanted a business like ours there. We got about 30 business owners that fully support us. And a lot of them have asked to do business together, some sort of cross-promotion type thing to help them. We, you know, they help us. And ultimately, our goal for the, for this whole thing, you know, we've brought in tons of people that support what we're trying to do. And for us, it's, this is a little weird to be, I don't know, under some sort of little spotlight and stuff. And it's something that we're not used to. We just want to put our business in the best position that we can. I mean, we're speaking kind of for all artists, all reputable artists in here. And it's not just specifically us, but it is us that we're trying to do, trying to bring this to. And for us, it's just, we want to be a part of the heart of the city. And I feel like having a business that represents a service that isn't represented in the downtown area, where you can go into downtown, maybe 80, 90% of the people have a tattoo or piercing or permanent cosmetic. And to have a business represent that in downtown, I think it'd be great. And for us, we're not trying to come in and be this, you know, loud thing that, you know, is causing all this. We just want to work with the downtown businesses. We want to, in any way we can, you know, whether it's, you know, some sort of fundraiser, whether it's some art show, whatever it can be. We just want to contribute to how awesome downtown is. And that's our, that's our main goal. So I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Next is an unidentified speaker, if you'd like to come up.
Actually, I think I was identified as one of those morons, but that's okay. Now, I can only defend my own thoughts and comments, all right? I don't know the gentleman. He said he's choosing a friend as his client over money, and that is his choice. I'm pro-business. I'd probably do the exact same thing. But that should not be the reason to change a statute. Unless, of course, it's another friend of his, the tattoo owner, who may or may not be on the council, who may or may not be on the take. Tattoo parlors are not in the same class as the gentleman mentioned. This is a state and federal designation. It is not in the same light of business as the gentleman mentioned. I hate to tell you to, but it's in the same category as gentlemen's clubs. Look it up. There's been no change since 2014. Well, there's been a couple. But three of the four had to do with working with, on public things, not private business. The last one was 2014. And it was specific, tattoo parlors. Again, I have no problem with a tattoo parlor. I really don't, okay? What I have a problem with is changing statutes to accommodate one business. As a matter of fact, that's the same argument I have about Quick Stop. Everyone wants to change a statute for one business. And for those who did not know this, tattoo parlors and associated affiliated type of businesses have to be 500 feet away, well, typically 500 to 1,000 feet. It depends on the area, state, city, county. But 500 to 1,000 feet. So now, let me think, what's within 500 to 1,000 feet? A high school and a couple of churches. That ain't me. That's not me. And then limited discretion. It was noted that we don't recommend changing for all the areas, just this one spot. Just this one spot. Just for this one business? That was put forward to change a statute by one council member? Lastly, I think you, to be honest, I do believe that you guys have done the right thing. And, and I forgot, with respect to getting a lot of pro in favor of a tattoo parlor, hey, we got the same thing with a firehouse. And we all know how that went. That was coordinated and attacked to make it appear that God and everybody wanted a firehouse. And we know that's not true. For the last time, oh, and I do believe there are other business locations available for a tattoo parlor or any similar business that you don't have a change of statute for. If this was the last open area in Brentwood, I'd have a whole different mindset on it. Your decision, it really should be an easy one. It really should. If you take, just take the whole 500 feet, and that's a state thing, that's not a Danny thing. Just take the 500 to 1,000 feet. You do it with smoking. You do it with alcohol. It should be an easy decision. And yes, more than likely, the council will turn it over because friends are friends are friends. But just look at it like that. Just look at it like that.
Kristin Mingus?
Intimidating. Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kristin Mingus. I'm the Downtown Brentwood Coalition's executive director. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Downtown Brentwood Coalition and our local member businesses. We appreciate the opportunity to share our perspective on the evolving landscape of our downtown, particularly in light of the recent discussions about tattoo parlors opening up in the downtown area. As a coalition, we're committed to supporting local businesses of all kinds. However, our primary mission is to preserve the unique character, vitality, and long-term success of downtown Brentwood. We also want to highlight the importance of the downtown specific plan, which has played a crucial role in fostering a vibrant and thriving downtown. The plan has not only guided thoughtful growth, but has also protected the integrity of our downtown core, ensuring it remains a welcoming, walkable, and economically strong destination for years to come. To achieve this, we believe it is important to be intentional about these types of businesses that occupy the core downtown district. Service businesses like tattoo parlors, while valid and valuable, tend to generate less foot traffic and fewer opportunities for cross-shopping and casual discovery, two key components that help small businesses in the downtown area grow. What we'd love to see is, oh, sorry. What we'd love to see and what we know our community responds to is a focus on foot-traffic-driven establishments, restaurants, cafes, bars, boutique retail, and other spaces that encourage people to linger, explore, and engage with multiple businesses during their visit. We're not here to oppose any specific business or industry. Rather, we're advocating for a thoughtful and balanced approach that prioritizes the economic health and vibrancy of the downtown corridor, ensuring it remains a destination for residents and visitors alike. Following the current downtown specific plan has been a key factor in creating the successful and thriving downtown we have today. Thank you for your time and your ongoing commitment to the success of our downtown businesses.
At this time, we have no other speaker cards for those in person. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Our first speaker is Melissa Van Rutten.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Perfect. Good evening, commissioners. I am speaking today to urge you to support amending the downtown specific plan to allow tattoo parlors as a permitted use in all areas that it makes sense. Obviously, the city hall area and residential areas are not sensible areas. Over the past several decades, public perception of tattoo parlors and tattooing has shifted significantly, and for good reason. What was once stigmatized as fringe has become a widely respected and deeply personal form of artistic expression. Today, people from all walks of life, teachers, veterans, nurses, parents, choose tattoos to honor milestones, celebrate loved ones, and carry meaningful stories on their skin. This evolution reflects not only changing cultural norms, but a growing appreciation for the artistry and skill involved in the craft. It is no longer the tattoo clientele of, you know, rowdy sailors and bike gangs. Tattoo artists are exactly that. They're artists. They spend years developing their technique, honing their portfolios, and building relationships with their clients. Like painters, photographers, which I am one, and muralists, they bring creativity, precision, and vision to their work. In many communities, tattoo shops serve as hubs as... In many communities, tattoo shops serve as hubs of creativity and inclusion, places where people can feel seen and celebrated. Denying them access to downtown commercial districts effectively denies their legitimacy as working artists and business owners. In addition to the cultural and economic value tattoo studios bring, it's important to acknowledge their role in medical tattooing and restorative work. Many artists today specialize in procedures such as covering surgical scars, repigment, repigmenting skin affected by conditions like, I'm going to pronounce this totally wrong, vitiglio, because I've never had to say it out loud, or recre- or recreating areolas after mastectomies. These procedures are profoundly healing, both physically and emotionally, and should be embraced as part of the broader spectrum of community care and wellness. Downtown areas should absolutely reflect the diversity, creativity, and inclusivity of the communities they serve. Allowing tattoo parlors to operate in these spaces signals that we value all forms of artistry and support the rights of small business owners to contribute to the vibrancy and economy of our city. It takes, on average, about thirty minutes for a tattoo artist to sketch a design for a client. That's thirty minutes that that client could be shopping in other areas of downtown or grabbing an ice cream or a coffee from one of our wonderful downtown businesses. I urge you to amend the downtown, or to, to suggest the resolution to amend the downtown specific plan to include tattoo parlors, not only because it's the right choice for our local artists and entrepreneurs, but because it reflects who we are and the kind of community we want to be, open-minded, supportive of family businesses, and forward-thinking. Thank you so much for your time.
At this time, we have no other hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, April.
Sorry, through the chair, I take that back. Someone did raise their hand.
Okay.
We're going to go with Maris Olivas, and we have Cindiana Tudor afterwards.
Sorry, I was running around. Um, I just wanted to ask that, um, we take a look. I, I don't think this should move forward. I think it was pretty irresponsible of the council to vote yes. The three-two vote was completely irresponsible. This was such a thoughtful process, and it was taxpayer money, resident time that we used to, to look at this downtown, um, co- um, the Brentwood specific plan. And for someone to just come in and bulldoze over it, I find it completely disrespectful to the residents of Brentwood. And, um, I, I think that if something like this is happening, then it needs a longer conversation. We should have workshops like we had before. And also, what's interesting is you talk about the four, the only four other times it was, um, changed. And that was for either city-run items, you know, the, the Taj Mahal you're in right now, the library, all things that were so beneficial to the community at large. And this is very niche. And to bulldoze a plan that was so thoughtful, I find it completely irresponsible of the city council to, you know, the three-two vote, um, completely irresponsible. So I don't know what can be done so that the residents, um, who were a part of this throughout the years, um, aren't just disrespected and pushed aside, um, for this one particular owner. Thank you.
Next is Cindiana Tudor.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I hope everyone can hear me. Oh, yes.
We can hear you.
Thank you so much for confirming that. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name has been, uh, mentioned earlier for some reason. Uh, I only express my personal opinions, and I think they're all grounded in the truth. Um, uh, I want to respond to Mr., um, uh, I think his name, the landlord, uh, for the, the specific place that's supposed to be, um, rented out to the tattoo parlor in discussion. Uh, Tom Gregory, I just remembered his name. Um, so again, uh, that possibly proves there's no hard feelings, no personal attacks in any way, even though he, uh, proceeded to do that in a public forum. Uh, I want to mention that I am all pro-business. I care about Brentwood, and I want our downtown to thrive. The reason we see the revival that we see today and our downtown flourishing is because for years, we've been following our downtown specific plan to being, bring vibrancy to our historical downtown and really respect our heritage and traditions and really make this place, um, fa- family-friendly and a place where the community gathers. I know there've been, uh, several, um, letters sent to you along these lines, and I fully support the, um, that, that, the idea that we need to stick to the plan and respect what previous, you know, like current previous, uh, residents of Brentwood put in writing and urged previous, uh, planning commissions and councils to vote on. This matter is a matter of planning, and that is your job. Historically, I've been speaking to people who are born and raised in Brentwood, people, uh, you know, ninety-plus year olds, uh, or forty-plus year olds. And his, they confirmed that historically Brentwood did not have tattoo parlors downtown. It must be a very good reason for that. It's because it's not something that people want it. We need to really be mindful of that and respect tradition and keep Brentwood Brentwood. Hmm, most speakers, uh, that you heard tonight spoke about the meaning and objective of a tattoo parlor. I'm in line with that. And there's no First Amendment rights issue as, uh, some of the council, uh, members, uh, mentioned when this item has been promoted for further discussion for this forum and pass, uh, you know, and later possibly for, uh, council, uh, discussion. Nobody denies that Brentwood, um, uh, uh, we ha- we have a, a very flourishing tattoo business, and they're all doing great. One of the proponents of this item mentioned that there's no crime around their current place. There's no, nothing that prevents them to be successful where they are. However, going back to what downtown specific plan mentions, we want high-quality businesses, high-performing and high-impact investment that will transform downtown Brentwood into a destination for the entire region. As the previous, uh, um, speaker mentioned, this is a niche business. It's not something that everyone, like, I want to know, is it twenty percent, eighty percent of the population frequent in order to make it worthy to establish it downtown? So the decision's yours, and I pre-
The speaker's time has expired. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak? Please raise your hand now. We have no further speakers in Zoom.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, let's see where we are. So, uh, oh, we do need a vote on this one. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, discussion. I don't know, let's start on the left. Chair Johnson.
So, um, I just got to say, I've been, uh, very conflicted on this thing. Very, very conflicted on, on this, uh, because I can see both pros and cons to it. You know, when I was growing up, I'm just going to say, when I was growing up, tattoos were like, and I grew up in Brooklyn. If you grew up in Brooklyn in tattoos, you were either a gang member or some crazy, that, some, you know, it was just an unsavory thing when I was growing up. My son has a tattoo, so, and, uh, I'm not, uh, going nuts over it. And a lot of people that I know have tattoos. So I, I just want to state for the record, I got nothing against tattoo parlors, and I really, um, I don't have anything against tattoo parlors. Or no judgments against them either. But I just want to, you know, I asked earlier about why we don't do it for the whole city. And part of that reasoning is, um, I don't like unintended consequences. So, for example, if we say by right in the downtown area, and it's a CUP everywhere else, we can have an influx or, you know, over time, more tattoo parlors downtown because they don't have to have a CUP if they come downtown versus in any other part of the city. And I think that could be an unintended consequence. I think, um, I wanted, I guess I can't ask this clarifying question about the five hundred feet. You know, is that something that we need to be concerned about, five hundred feet, the distance between the schools? No, just?
I'm not aware of any particular state center that requires a five hundred-foot, um, distance requirement. Uh, not to say that it doesn't exist, I'm just not aware of any.
Okay. So, um, part of the, part of my concerns would be that, you know, the downtown specific plan was worked on by the downtown, um, coalition. They came up with it, city involvement, people involvement, and they, they did that. I will say it was, though, twenty years ago, and twenty years ago, you know, times have changed. I don't know if we should look at updating the, the downtown specific plan. I personally don't like, what I call one-offs, but we've lately been doing a lot of one-offs, like one-off over here, one-off over there. There's a one-off this way, a one-off that way, and those one-offs cause, uh, issues. So I'm more, let's do it everywhere if we could. Um, um, and I understand that we should, uh, want to allow a business downtown. I don't want to be anti-business. We should be able to allow a tattoo parlor. I got no problem with that. The, the issue is, we are doing a lot of one-offs. And sometimes, um, and we're doing a lot of, uh, doing that up here. So I mentioned that. And I also think that it can be unfair to other tattoo parlors. So what are, you know, there's a tattoo parlor, I guess it's on, um, Balfour. Balfour, across from the Safeway, so they probably have a CUP. So if they got a CUP and this one doesn't have a CUP, there's an inequity in terms of different businesses having different levels of entry to do business in the same city. You know, uh, different levels, different cost structures, which probably I don't particularly care for. I understand the city council wants this, and I, um, think that, you know, we're gonna, we, and I understand why they want it, and I think it's a good thing to open it up. I have a one other question. Are there any other tattoo parlors right now in this area currently in the downtown specific area?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And, uh, because I know, um, what it, I guess that would be the Brentwood's, um, Brentwood plan. The one on Brentwood Boulevard, where's that? Um, the, where is, it's on Brentwood Boulevard. I think there are a couple, what, yeah. Wha- what are those?
Okay, um, I'm going to take this one at a time, and actually I had a couple of comments to your comments, if, if you don't mind. So, back in, in May, when this thing was really kind of gaining steam, I did a little bit of research and found a total of, now, I didn't go back to the beginning of time, but I went back about like twenty years and found, uh, seven, seven different CUP approvals throughout the city, uh, for different tattoo parlors. There's a couple on Brentwood Boulevard. There's a couple on Sand Creek Road. There's a couple, and there's three on Balfour Road, so those are the seven. I don't know how many of those are still either in existence, or maybe they are but have changed names since then. Um, but those are all basically outside of the specific plan. I don't recall, when the specific plan was adopted in two thousand and five, I don't recall like getting any requests or, um, you know, people coming to staff saying, hey, can I put a tattoo parlor downtown? It just wasn't really a thing. In two thousand and fourteen, when the council amended the plan to specifically prohibit them, then it was clear to everybody, okay, like, don't even bother coming downtown because we can't. But again, just a reminder that this, this started in, in January, uh, through the council, so staff is simply responding to that request. But I, I did want to point out too, like, uh, and some of the, uh, speakers have, have mentioned this, which I totally understand. On, you know, on one hand, when you create a plan and you put a significant amount of time and effort in, in the communities involved, there's an expectation that that plan is it. It's almost like, you know, the Bible in some sense. But plans like that, whether it's the general plan, which is the entire city, or specific plans, or zoning ordinances, they can and do change over time and, but when they do, the key is that there's thoughtful consideration, right? Is, is this a, is this a good thing? Is it the right moment in time to do it? Uh, now to one of your points, ideally from a staff's perspective, just as a planning professional, when you're talking about a specific plan like the downtown, and there's other issues maybe that you want to look at, ideally, yes, you would study it comprehensively and do, um, an entire update like we did in two thousand and fourteen with the general plan. Doesn't always work that way. Um, and it's a tremendous, I get, get, go back to the, uh, original adoption, is a tremendous, uh, uh, time and resource effort. And it's just not, that's not happening right now. But that was mentioned at the council meeting in May. I think one or two council members kind of asked like, hey, should we be looking at the downtown, uh, more holistically? And the answer would be, in a perfect world, yes. But this is a very specific item for a very specific use. I also wanted to say just real quick, last point is that, and while I appreciate the, you know, the property owner and the potential business owner speaking, uh, speaking out on this item, it, this is not about a particular business in a particular location, right? The way the, uh, specific plan is proposed to be amended, it would be for any tattoo parlor in any of those applicable district zones. So you, you got to be careful to not look at, you know, a particular person or a particular location or particular use. It would be, uh, more district-wide, if that makes sense.
Okay. Okay. I, um, so my, you know, I guess what I would sum it up to say is I understand why we, why we would want to be more open to, um, tattoo parlors in the downtown area, businesses in general. I get it, and I'm pro-doing that. I think, um, I just wish there was a, 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 a different, uh, more even-keeled way of doing it. That would be my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, before, before we go on with discussion, I had mentioned to staff, I was going to make a statement about this. And I forgot to do it until just now, but I, I just want for the public to understand that the planning commission is making an advisory decision tonight. No matter what happens here, it doesn't change what's going to happen at city council. It's just for their consideration. And also, the item that we've been asked to consider is not about your particular store or your particular business. It's about whether or not we're going to change the zoning downtown to allow tattoo parlors. And so nothing we say here tonight is any kind of a referendum on, on you fine folks. And so nothing we say here tonight is any kind of a referendum on, on you fine folks. Um, I'm ab- absolutely impressed with the, the support that you've got. And, um, we, we, you're great people, we just, um, it's not factored into what we're doing tonight. What we're doing tonight is looking at a section of town and deciding whether or not, um, the zoning should change, or whether the resolution does change the zoning needs adjusting, things like that. So it's totally advisory and nothing to do with, um, any particular business. Okay, and having said that, I'm gonna go on to you. Commissioner Jones, do you have a discussion?
Yeah, thank you Chair. So, first, want to express just my appreciation for the work done, uh, by staff on this amendment. Um, you know, the extensive public engagement, uh, that's taken place over the past several months. Everybody's voices matter, and so thank you for that. Clearly, that this issue has sparked interest, it's got some strong feelings from our residents. And I want to thank everyone, both here and not here, who's taken the time to participate in the process, whether through public comments, attending meetings, or engaging with staff. Now, for me, the issue that we're discussing tonight's not whether tattoo parlors should be allowed downtown. I, I think that decision has already been made by the majority of the City Council, and I think that does need to be respected. I think also we need to recognize that this is not about one business either, right? It's about all two tattoo parlors, um, operating today and operating tomorrow. To the point of Chair Flor, um, thank you to the business that's here. Clearly you're professional, clearly you're running a good shop. Um, and, you know, it, this is obviously much bigger, right, than, than what we're, what we're talking about, um, today. But I think ultimately what we should be considering really is just the implementation framework for this decision. You know, the proposal in front of us, it allows tattoo parlors as a permitted use, so that's subject only to an administrative design review. The rationale for this is understandable, you know, they are becoming increasingly mainstream. They have the opportunity to contribute to a vibrant and diverse downtown economy. And I completely understand the intent behind this. However, you know, this represents a significant shift from the way tattoo parlors have historically operated in Brentwood. You know, we're talking about allowing a, a new category of use in areas where it has previously been prohibited. And one that's not gonna require Planning Commission or City Council review, no public hearing, no discretionary conditions. That can be tailored to each of the individual situations. So that raises just some questions for me, some serious questions for me. And I think while an administrative design review is a valuable tool, uh, it is limited in its scope, and, you know, given the visibility and the importance of our downtown, um, I do believe, you know, the Planning Commission should at least discuss whether the council should reconsider a, a conditional use permit as the better tool here. You know, a CUP would allow us to look at site-specific factors, impose reasonable conditions, and provide an opportunity for public input, which I think is really, really important. Uh, this would be, I think, especially important in an area just as central and I think as sensitive as our downtown, where the cumulative impact of various uses can significantly shape the character of the community. So if the CUP is not the preferred route, um, as we have our discussion tonight, you know, I, I, I would recommend, you know, that we do discuss just the administrative design review criteria. I'm open to what that discussion might look like. So again, look, I, I recognize, you know, the, the, the potential, and I, I, I think it is important to kind of identify where tattoo parlors have, have now come, that, that it's, it's a different world. Like, like you were saying, you know, Commissioner Johnson, I, I, I recognize that. I don't have tattoos, I probably won't get one, they're a little too permanent for me. But, um, you know, I, I get it, I, I totally understand, you know, where, where we're going. Um, but I, I do believe that we need more than just an administrative design review to ensure that, you know, these businesses are just integrated thoughtfully into our downtown. So, I would be more comfortable supporting this amendment if, you know, we either required a conditional use permit for tattoo parlors, which would just allow us to review, and not just us, future planning commissions as well, you know, to, to review each proposal just more carefully, and just ensure that it fits the context of the surrounding area. If we can't get there, um, you know, I think we should discuss strength, strengthening the administrative design review criteria. So, I, I, I think we've got a lot of good points to consider tonight, and, you know, once discussion is complete, um, I, I'm, I look forward to talking about the next steps. So, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now, and I'll, I'll probably have some more comments a little bit later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, and Pastor Roberts.
Well, I, I happen to piggyback on everything you just said. My concern is not the tattoo parlor, um, and the business at hand. My concern is the process and how we got here. There is a process. Otherwise, we have chaos. I've seen a lot of cities develop into chaos, uh, because they, they just bypassed the process. And, and that is something that I take very seriously. Had this gone through a process, the, just the normal process, we wouldn't, it would probably be a lot easier for all of us. But that council took it upon themselves to take the process out of our hands and kind of dictate that this is what we want. What that does, and I look around at quite a few municipalities, Oakland is one of the ones that come up, but there, there's several out there. And when you do that, what you have is chaos. What you have are a hodgepodge of this, that, and the other. Not to say tattoo parlors fall in line with that, but there's a process for a reason. This isn't about the tattoo parlor, this is about, um, the land use. It is about a process that we take very seriously up here. And we should. If we didn't, well, I don't know that we would be, uh, as, um, supportive in, in some of the things that we have had to endure. So the zoning and planning regulations exist precisely to maintain cohesive, intentional development patterns. We have a downtown specific plan that speaks to that, we have a general plan. So something was said earlier, and I, I really get this on the record. I know we're kind of late in our general plan, um, redoing our general plan. And because of that, these one-offs are, are another way of doing the come-around on the general plan. Has nothing to do with what we're, what you wonderful people are here, uh, to discuss this evening, or to at least listen this evening. But the general plan is there for a reason. And we're kind of behind on that, it is costly, but doing it this way is not the way to go about it. My bigger concern is a tattoo parlor, not a problem. But then I'm going to have to deal with someone that comes behind you on a one-off. And someone becomes behind them on a one-off. And again, yes, we're setting a precedent here. I don't know that City Council understands that. And if they do, they're, they're opening the city up for possible lawsuits. Why am I saying that? Because if, if we go ahead and allow this, uh, which I, you know, I'm, I'm good with the tattoo parlor. The process is what I'm having an issue with. Then the person that comes behind you that wants the same outcome, and I, and we say no, or council says no, well, that's gonna be a problem for the city of Brentwood. I know I'd make it a problem for the city of Brentwood, because you can't do that. It's not a one-off, it's one for all and all for one. And that's the way it should be, it's there, set up for a reason. Now, I did my research on this, and quite frankly, I was really surprised that council, decided to, to do it this way. The Planning Commission is here to make recommendations to council. And if the council wants to just do away with the Planning Commission, they should just come out and say that. Because we're here to do our research and make, uh, advisor, make decisions or help them in making decisions, um, that move projects and development forward. And bringing it to us this way is kind of an indicator that they don't need, they don't need it, they don't need us, they don't, we're not working in concert with one another, and I, I, I take issue with that. We implement the general plan through actions, including the administration of specific plans, that's our role. We annually review capital improvement projects. We recommend to City Council plans for the future growth of the city of Brentwood. And although I, I know I'm, I'm 71, so I've been around a, quite a bit, uh, a lot longer than most of us in here. And at the end of the day, I know the tattoos are the way to go, and people are, they're into it. And, and I, and I support that, no question. But I don't support the way this process is being brought before the dais, that is a problem for me. And, um, I'm gonna have more to say about this, because I, I did quite a bit of research on what some of these municipalities look like when they go, I don't, I wouldn't say go rogue, but when they decide that they don't need to follow specific plans, they don't need to follow, uh, the guidance of a general plan, that they could just pick and choose. I, I will share that with, uh, my colleagues and all of you shortly. But it's, it is a scary thought to think that this is the way that we're going to do business. Uh, I don't think the residents, I'm a resident here, and that's not what I bought into, moving to the city of Brentwood. I, I like processes, I like to have things followed. There's a policy, there's a reason for policy. And when we start bypassing it, we're gonna run into some, some problems. We're in line with the state of California Legislature, what we do up here. It's not that we're, we've written our own, um, our own, uh, description, job description. We're in line with the state of California Legislature. And the legislature says that there are certain things that we have to do and have to follow, and this is one of them. So that's all I have for now, but I'll get back to, um, my, my colleagues here shortly.
Thank you, Pastor Roberts. Vice Chair, Brad.
Yes, thank you. Um, I do sincerely appreciate the comments I've heard today. It's just, I'm, I'm hearing so much thought that has gone into, um, your individual research and such, and so I just, I just wanted to share that appreciation. I've got a substantial amount of my own as well, so, uh, I'm, this item has definitely been in the back of my mind since I read that it was, I, since I saw the notice in the press, uh, last month. And, uh, it's caused me to ask a lot of questions, because, um, in particular, this type of land use is not something I'm very familiar with. And so, through my own, uh, uh, research and such, as well as talking to many different people, particularly within the community, I've learned a lot about what does this use entail, what does it mean? My, first thing that I did was I looked at the DSP, uh, sorry, the Downtown Specific Plan. I, I, I looked into it, and obviously we've had previous agenda items more recently where the DSP was highly reviewed and critiqued and, you know, you know, all of that. So, um, picked that back up again, and as I described to Mr. Nolteus, is like, the, the revisions that have taken place over the last, let's call it 20 years, from, what, November 2005, I think was, the primary revision points have been civic in nature. Uh, the first being the civic, uh, this, this building, as well as some of the others. Um, the library, um, and then the parking, you know, the in-lu fees related to the parking, and then, uh, due to the big structure over here, or over there, sorry. The only one that falls outside of that was the 2014 amendment, which included a lot of the, um, addition of non-permitted uses. Now, I went back and I watched every single one of those meetings in which they reviewed it, uh, the planning meeting, to which, similar to what we're doing today, where we make a recommendation to council, and then watch the council meeting as far as how they treated it. Now, 2014 was the first instance in which we had a, I'll call it a, uh, an attempt to best revise the language. And I, I took a couple of quotes from, um, the May 20th of 2014 meeting. Basically, there were no public comments, we had a lot of concerns related to specifically permitted use definitions. One of the main things, actually, uh, former Chair Ziegler, uh, was on the committee at the time, or, uh, the commission at the time, and he had commented specifically about the, um, uh, the financial institution uses. And so there was a lot of digging into that as a use, but breaking down that definition very clearly, because at, at least he had articulated that the, the use of a financial institution is more broad than I think the, the document at the time did, because he was saying by insurance, you know, they often do financial services and such. So, including that as a consideration was valuable. Now, I, I promise I'm not gonna take forever on this, but, um, uh, really and truly, the, what came forward was this idea that the, the predominant uses were not changed, it was just adding this idea of, um, adding significant permitted uses. I took a, I took a screen grab of what some of the, what the DSP looked like back then. And there were no non-permitted uses, well, that's a double negative. It was only permitted and cups, and that was pretty much it. Um, and so, most of which, and it was commented in the staff report, looks identical, uh, to what it was in 2005 compared to 2014. So, in saying, and also, Mr. Gregory, I know you had commented in 2005 commenting about that as far as your concerns as well, so I appreciate the continuity over the last 20 years and, and your participation in the city of Brentwood. The, I think what I wanted to get into as far as the, where we're at today with this, is the, the revisions that we've seen in the, in the more recent years, as well as the evolution of businesses that we've seen, um, fill the spaces, have primarily, I, I would call them falling into two different buckets. One of which we have is a, I'll call it a more, based on my assessment, is a, a more transactional use. It's a, it's a use in which, uh, a customer goes into a particular store and, um, purposefully seeks a very specific type of, um, uh, transaction. When I say this, it's, you know, most cities at this rate, and I've got some details on this, is that most cities classify this as a personal service, so in reference to tattoo uses. So, city of Pittsburgh, Antioch, Walnut Creek, I believe. Um, they call it a personal service because it's indicative of a one-on-one exchange. So you're talking like a tailor, a shoe repair. It's like, it, it's not a, um, it, it's a service where I seek it specifically, and I don't seek it in a way that would potentially draw me to a region versus the particular business. The other side of businesses that I see are the, I'll call them, uh, more on the experiential side of business. Now, when I hear this, it's, when I looked at it, it, it fell into three typical categories that we've seen, at least in the last, I'll call it five years. We have entertainment, we have dining, and we have, um, uh, what was the other one I wrote down? Entertainment, dining, and, uh, gosh, I've got too many notes. And retail, excuse, God, that's the easy one. Entertainment, dining, and retail. Now, these are, these typically, um, based off of what we've seen, at least I'll call it in the last five, 10 years, has been a sort of cohesive relationship from an economic standpoint. And I think one of the wins that we've seen since, I'll call it 2019, is that our downtown corridor has blossomed, frankly. I did a, I did a quick, uh, click-through of the street view on, uh, Google Maps going back to 2007. And it was just, it was kind of beautiful to watch the way that the downtown has evolved over the last, you know, 17, 18 years, um, in that essence of the DSP. Why am I saying all this? Okay, so I know it's been brought up as far as consideration for why we may need a, a cup, as Commissioner, um, Jones had described, why a more comprehensive type review may be warranted. Um, as well as the, I don't know, I don't want to put words in Commissioner Johnson's mouth, but, um, a potential, uh, not a vacuum, but a, a way of, uh, drawing a lot of businesses towards a particular area as a result of, uh, slightly more lax, um, uh, business regulation, in a sense. You know, I spoke with, uh, I had a wonderful conversation with the folks over at the East Contra Costa Historical Society. Um, and they did a little research project for me as well. Because I was curious, because I looked at this and said, well, in 2005, or even 2014, you know, did we ever have? you know, did we ever have any record whatsoever before we had any type of regulation in this region? And they did exhaustive research back, I think, almost 100 years. And they were, I'll, I'll read, Doreen, thank you so much, by the way, because you're so "Researches of photographs, local newspapers, maps, Brentwood City file collections did not create a memory or reference of a tattoo business in downtown Brentwood in its, in its history." So I know, Mr. Nolteus, you commented specifically on greater Brentwood, in the last 20 years, we saw approximately seven. My research was not able to find one that predates even the tattoo location downtown that even predates the city's founding in 1948. I, this was important to me because it tells me what was important then and potentially what was important now. I, all that to say, what does that mean as far as a way that this region's relationship with this particular use should look like? With that, I'd like to return to the DSP. And we have a couple of things in there that really comment profoundly as far as what the intent of this region is. So we say, designate downtown as a specific planning area to strengthen the downtown, the downtown as a destination point. This is 3.1.2 in specific planning area. Provide special planning attention to the city core and ensure that development occurs according to design guidelines and land use standards. Okay, that's kind of a blah statement, but, you know, even going back to 1983, what our general plan said was maintain downtown as community center. The city will promote an attractive, economically healthy downtown that will serve as the main community center as the Brentwood community grows. I know that that's a much older statement than what was written in 2005. And if you would like a fun read, is read the vision of downtown. It's a, it's a kind of a short story, a theoretical short story that, I don't even know actually who, who wrote it, but somebody as part of the plan. So that being said, you know, we wrote the DSP and I would say that a lot of the DSP evolved quickly. I know the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan, I think Commissioner Johnson had referenced it, is very similar in that regard. And the reason was behind that was the idea of the SR4 bypass going in and essentially Brentwood Boulevard moving away from being a automotive corridor, in a sense. And how, you know, many aspects of the downtown specific plan include this idea of a walkable ground floor, this, this walkable space that contains so much vibrancy, diversity, and uniqueness, charm that a, only a, in California, it's a small town, but 65,000 people or so can only bring. It's what makes downtown unique from a place like the streets of Brentwood, as an example. As part of that, in, during that 2014 revision in which those non-permitted or prohibited uses were added, a meeting was held. And I just wanted to read through what was said because this is the last instance in which the public had a real opportunity to address the downtown area as a whole in terms of what those permitted uses are. So a notice of public meeting was mailed to all the property owners within the DSP area. There were several questions and comments, including requests to add permitted uses within the Western Gateway Neighborhood District Zone in order to accommodate uses already in existence. I'll give a, so other comments that were regarded as issues in the downtown area, including skateboarding, maintenance of the sidewalks, landscaping, inclusion of additional trash receptacles, which many of these things had actually gone in there. But it's beautiful to see how you, you know, you get the garbage cans and you get the, the walkways, the widened sidewalks, all of that. And so I know that, yes, we only had approximately 10 members of, of the public that attended that meeting. To Commissioner Roberts, your comment as far as the, the, the way that our community typically needs to be engaged as far as what they want to see in a downtown space. That is a fantastic example of how we engage the public in a way that meaningfully allows them the space and, you know, similar to this one in a public hearing, to communicate what they want from their city as well as what they want from a, a particular region of their city, whether it be downtown or somewhere else. As far as what we do here today, that's, that's our recommendation to city council whenever that meeting eventually comes up. There's, you know, to me at least, I'm, I'm seeing this as very much an open book as far as possibilities. You know, we recommend this because we do this specific, we're an extension of city council in the sense that we're, we're doing a lot of homework for them. And I, and I hope that they trust that the work that we're putting in here today and the work that they're hearing over Zoom is that we have individual considerations and that these considerations need to be front and center. Now, I, I can get into the specifics of what other cities have said with respect to these particular uses. One of the ones that I particularly liked that was called out is this active ground floor use. It's something that the city of Pleasanton does. And one of the areas that, one of the particular uses that they don't include is personal services. They specifically asked that that area be, what do they say? Active ground floor uses, ground floor uses include retail establishments, restaurants, bars, brew pubs, art and craft studios, and other uses determined by Director of Community Development, that kind of thing. So it's, it looked, it sounded exceptionally similar to the way that we see our downtown evolving. And I, I personally, I absolutely love downtown Pleasanton. They, that area has evolved very nicely. And I see our downtown on a path very similar to that. A few others, you know, city of Antioch, they allow it. For the most part, it's, it's a mixture of permitted versus requiring a conditional use permit. Same for the city of Pittsburgh. And Walnut Creek was particularly interesting. They have this very, I'll call it, interesting map where they highlight, you know, similar to what we do, but it's a bit more technicolor. It's, it's a bit more scattered versus big blocks of individual colors. And they have a single strip along, what is it, between Cole and Trinity Avenue where it's a permitted use. But the rest of the area, it's a, it's a kind of, it's kind of a mixture there. So I guess what I'm saying here today is that I, I have looked off and on on this for the last, like, several weeks now. And I have, in my heart of hearts, I'm looking at this and saying, I think that this particular use is grouped with a, what I would consider to be a personal service type use, which is a more generic term that I think many other cities have used as a use. And I think that particular use group needs to be treated uniformly across any uses that match a personal service. And that would, in particular, would include that of a, in what other, many other cities reference as a tattoo parlor, would fall under that same use. And so if we were going to make an amendment, it would include that we would group them accordingly and revise our, potentially, I don't know, maybe Eric, if you can maybe answer this, is like, in the municipal code, how a, we do make reference to personal service, or personal services, but I don't know how that directly is affected by the downtown specific plan. Like, do they double-use that definition in terms of use or yes or no? I, I couldn't figure that out specifically.
Yeah, I'd have to kind of do some research as we're talking here. I know that in the broader municipal code, Title 17, there is a definition for tattoo parlor. I don't think tattoo parlor, however, is referenced anywhere else in the code, which is why in the past, those seven prior uses required a CUP. But I think personal services are mentioned in the zoning ordinance, and then they're also mentioned in the specific plan, which I think is what you were referencing, right? And there's even some examples like, you know, hair and nail salons, beauty and barber shops, those are traditional personal service type uses. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. And through my long-winded comments here is that, at the beginning, I had mentioned that the, we fall into, we have this fall into two different categories. And I, and my perception and my research is that personal services definitely falls on a much more of a transactional basis in terms of a business use. And to me, at least, that's, that's not consistent with what the downtown specific plan is intended to do. And I know that we do have existing uses in this region that meet that larger personal service definition. And I think continuing on a path that augments the entertainment, retail, dining use, uses, excuse me, would continue to carry the downtown's region in a more successful economic path. So all that to say, I'll, I'll pass the mic to Chair Flor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brian. That personal services thing is very interesting and it kind of brings up a point where these are the kinds of things that your planning commission can, can bring to you to think about, you know? If tattooing belongs in a category that already exists or does it need to remain separate? These kinds of things, these are just good examples of why things should go through the planning commission, but I'm getting ahead of myself and, man. I'm going to talk about some things today that I normally never talk about from dais. And the, the first is my personal opinion of this type of business, which normally, my personal opinion, whether I like a kind of business or not, whether I, you know, sit around with my wife saying, oh, you know, Brentwood needs more of this, or we should not have so much of that, or. It's because that's not what the job is here. My job as a planning commissioner, and I, I am very proud of these commissioners, I believe they all understand their role, is not to figure out, you know, is this thing that's before us something that we like? It's, is this thing something before us that is in the public interest? Actually, I think it's GOV 65105 that mandates that we consider the public interest. First and foremost, anything else would be null fees, and so it'd actually be a violation of our oath, but I won't go there right now. If it was, so I'll tell you, because clearly it matters how people perceive us perceiving this business. And so for me, I've never had anything against tattoos. I would have a tattoo if I wasn't so indecisive. I just cannot figure out something that permanently put on my body. I love graphic art. I've been a graphic art fan my entire life. I like it all. I like, I like, you know, the Art Nouveau posters, Mocha. I like comic books. I like manga. I, I watch anime like a fiend. I, I, if I see somebody with a tattoo, the only thing I think about is, I wonder if it'd be rude if I went up and asked him if I could look at that. So because I'm always curious to see the, to see the artwork. And to me, graphic, even going back to the, I'll probably mispronounce it, but the woodcuts, the Japanese woodcuts, the Ikiae, I have books of that in my house. So I have nothing against tattoos. I love them, I would have one, but A, I, I'd never have been able to really commit to something permanent on my body and B, I'm not a big fan of paint. And I have other reasons, but love it, love tattoos. Never, ever have I been judging somebody for having a tattoo. I just always thought they were cool. So that's what I think about tattoos. And again, I would never, ever say that, except that in this particular instance, I think the issue around tattooing and how people perceive tattooing is important to understand in this particular conversation, just because there is a, there is a certain controversy around it. So there you have it. But again, not my job tonight to think about any of that. None of it matters for this item. It matters a lot, but for this item. What I care about doesn't matter. What matters here is what is in the best interest of the community. And so I'm going to talk about some other stuff that I don't normally talk about. Legal issues, the legality of, of tattooing as a form of free expression. Again, I support free expression. I believe in freedom of speech. I believe people have the right to do what they want to do. I have no problem with any of that. However, we don't, generally in open session, and I, I know a council member made an extensive speech about some legalities and stuff, that's not something that we do here usually. We do care very much in this city that everything that goes into our code, everything that goes into our general plan, everything that goes into the specific plans is consistent with the law. And we have a legal staff that reviews everything that we do. You don't see it much because that's legal work and it's confidential for obvious reasons or should be obvious reasons. But we, we do care a lot about the law. But up here, we're not usually talking about the law, other than, you'll notice that we do always have an attorney, we have a new hybrid, we have a new attorney tonight, but we always have an attorney in these meetings. And the purpose of the attorney is usually to make sure that we conduct the meeting in accordance with the law. And they tell us, you know, like, alternate, can I say that? Or sometimes if we're going to suggest a change to something and we're not quite sure if it's kosher, we'll ask. And sometimes, you know, we'll recess and go in the back and talk about it. So we're not here tonight to affirm or deny anybody's right to free speech. It's just not an issue that comes before Brentwood Planning Commission. What's before us tonight, as I mentioned before, is a zoning change. And a zoning change, like I said, usually goes through, through staff, I mentioned, legal, and they make a very strong effort, believe me, because it's the, the day and age that we live in, you know, you want to, you want to have your ducks in a row legally. And they do all that work and staff does an incredible amount of work. We did have something before us recently where we, we had to make a, a change to our design review standards because the state mandated that they be objective and staff worked, I have no idea how many hours, the product was amazing when it came out. And they had consultants and they, they do legal work. But all of this comes to us and then we looked at it and then we, we suggest changes if we have any and, you know, and then it goes to city council for something like that. So that's what the lawyers do here. And that's what staff does here. They, they do 90% of the work before it ever comes to us. We, we really just review, evaluate. And so we take that review and evaluate responsibility very seriously here. We, we do our best to understand everything that's given to us to read. And we make decisions on that basis and I just want everybody to know that. And so the, the other reason I brought up the, the speech about the legalities is I, I think that people might have heard that and thought, well, the reason that this is coming forward at this time is in response to a Supreme Court ruling. And that's not the case. That ruling happened years ago. And this did not come to us as a result of a Supreme Court ruling. I believe that this was brought by a council member who knew someone that wanted to do a business in downtown Brentwood and they would need a rezone to accomplish that. So I think that was why that was proposed. And I think that that's the wrong way to go about things. I'll, I'll just be right up front. This is the wrong thing to do and I'm, I'm going to list some reasons. First of all, if we do a change to the general plan and particularly to these specific plans, which are actually, they are part of the Brentwood general plan. The Brentwood general plan is, I've heard it called the Constitution or the Bible, whatever, we, we go by that. That's, we have a general plan, every city has to have a general plan by state mandate. Again, we're required to do this. And the general plan, we live and die by that. And for. And for a city like Brentwood that's growing fast, we don't want to make mistakes. We want to be very concerned, considered. And especially for the specific plans, the reason that they break them out, the reason, you, you know, you can look at, at zones all, you can look at the land use map in the general plan and just look, and, and there's zoning, like, you know, housing densities, there's a uses like industrial, yeah. But the specific plans really get into, these are areas of the city that we want to concentrate on and make the best they can be. And there are meetings, I mean, you've, you've heard people here talking about how there's meetings, there's public hearings. People, there's workshops. I mean, I, I remember the last time the, the, the general plan was done. I was over in the community center and there was like tables everywhere and big maps and people representing all the interests, a lot of developers, a lot of residents, planning commissioners, city council members. I was there as a resident at the time. And, and it, it takes a lot of thought and a lot of discussion. And even for the downtown specific plan, I think we heard from the DBC tonight that they, that they're really kind of honing in on a vision for what they want downtown to be. And my personal opinion on that, and I don't think it's a controversial one, is it'd be great if we could have another go at the downtown specific plan sometime relatively soon. So that, because, you know, this, this vision of downtown is evolving and it is changing and things do change. So, that's, that's one reason why I don't think we should be making, you know, quick changes. Another reason is that zoning changes should be done for the benefit of the city as a whole and for the benefit of the residents and businesses who've been invested in the city. Residents have a right to expect that we will uphold our oath of office, which requires this commission to act in the public interest, which is GOV 65101, Section A. And again, this planning commission is trained and we, we know what our responsibilities are. And again, considering a zoning change for an individual business is not the same as considering zoning, a zoning change for the benefit of the general public. Another reason, sudden changes to the general plan and the municipal code road conference in the city government. Our general plan and municipal code are published for everyone to see. You can just go online and look at them. Perspective businesses can go look at them, homeowners or home purchasers can go look at those. I did when I came here. Review those documents, understand what the city is about, what the city intends to do, what goes where. It matters. Circulation plans for future growth, all kinds of things that are in there that people, when they invest in this community, they deserve to have some certainty about what the rules are gonna be. They don't want them changing just at random and possibly in a way that might cause an adverse impact on their investment. And let's, let's face it, a business or a home, especially for homeowners, the residents, that, you know, the, the 99% of the taxpayers here that are just homeowners. And it's the biggest investment they have in their life for most of them, for most of us. So, they don't, they, they don't want to see things just change. And we're constantly fighting changes being forced, foisted upon us from the state. But we can't do anything about that. But we do, we do our best to be consistent and deliberate. And so, we do know there's going to be changes. But there's a process and the public should be involved in those processes. They should be able to follow along and see the reasons for those changes, provide input. And perhaps most importantly, that they want to have plenty of advance notice so they consider their personal options for how to deal with the changes. And in considering a rezone of downtown specific plan to permit, permit a new kind of business, we could probably let people know we're gonna do that well in advance before it becomes in effect, because there might be other people that run tattoo shops that would like to come downtown. I, you know, I, they might, there might be other tattoo shops that would make a better bid for the space. There might be better tattoo shops that would want to occupy another space that wish they could come downtown and had no idea they could. And then all of a sudden, boom, they can. And, and then they have to adapt to that. And I don't think that's a fair way to do things. I think the fair way to do things is, as we go, let people know what we're doing, let people come in and comment, let them participate. Help the city understand what's a good idea, what's a bad idea. Let staff work on it. Staff has a great deal of expertise in all the legals, all, all of the possible ramifications. They'll think of things that all the consequences intended and unintended, you know, that, so it's important. It's, it's not something that we should just slap a, a rezone and, and certainly not to accommodate a single business. And again, this is nothing, I have great respect for you guys, but I want you to understand there's a process. Chat, changes to the general plan, which the DSP is part of, should never be rushed unless we're compelled. Again, we've had state laws that compel us to do some of these things. But other than that, staff should be given the opportunity to fully vet any proposed change. Consider all the consequences, both intended and unintended, as I said. Draft a proposal that can then move through the process. And the process would usually come through here first and then go to the city council. They should be enacted far enough in the future so the public can make whatever plans they'd like to make to adjust to the new rule. It's not a process that should be rushed. this one, and again, please don't take this the wrong way. But changing the zoning at the request of a specific business, which is something I've never seen this do here, sets a dangerous precedent. It creates the appearance of favoritism. Should never be the case that a party should be able to contact the commissioner or a council member directly and ask for a change to the general plan or municipal code for the benefit of that individual party. And I thought a lot about this, but granting this kind of a request creates the impression that if a person knows somebody downtown, they can maybe just approach them for a favor. And if they approach that person for a favor and that favor, that person sees that favor as something they can support, then maybe they'll, they'll do it. It might be granted. Maybe they'll, they'll give the person whatever change in the law they want. Unfortunately, what we all know about human nature is that for some people, support is something they can put a price on. And I, I'm definitely not saying that's the case here. I, I do honestly believe that Councilmember Orlin is just, is trying to help a business that, that he wants to see succeed. But it sets a dangerous precedent because then, you know, I don't want people knocking on my doors and, you know, hey, can you, can you help us get this change in the law? It's not appropriate and people will be suspicious. And again, I, I found that difficult to say because you, you're such nice people. And I, I don't want you to think it reflects on you, but this is the reality that we live in. what I think a better way to approach this, and this is moving into the discussion phase where we're gonna start talking about what we want to make this look at. But I, I think a better way to approach this would be for the city council to go back to staff and ask staff to fully research this proposal and bring forward a well-thought-out proposal for consideration. I, I feel like this has been rushed. City council did dictate some cert, some terms to staff before getting direct input from staff. And we never usually do that. Having staff do this like right away, taking as little time as possible, this creates the risk that, you know, things that advisable provisions might be omitted, things that staff would spot, things they're trained to look for. And not going through planning commission first where we are citizens like you. We're not specialists in this. I'm a computer programmer. We, we're not, we're here as residents, informed residents, taught what our responsibilities are and given these documents to go through and understand. And we work with staff. I can call staff, you know? But for the most part, what we do is we want to look at it the way that you would look at it if you were up here. Or the way that you would look at it, or anybody else would look at it, the way anybody would look at it if they were up here making a decision for the entire city of Brentwood. And it, it's kind of amusing to me because just before I was chatting with Eric and we were talking about how there's this disconnect. People see the, the business world, the corporate world, and how fast it all moves and how you can make a decision and just implement it. And government is not that way. And there's a reason why government's not that way. We are being asked to make decisions and make recommendations on things that affect, affect everybody that lives in this city, everybody that has a business in this city, everybody that visits this city. And so, we have to be circumspect. We can't just put up a business that if it fails, well, it goes under and so what? If we, if we fail, if we don't do a good job up here, it affects a lot of people. People can suffer, you know? I, I just want the commission to understand, staff to understand, and for, for the folks that are here in the audience to understand that I can't, I can't recommend that we move forward with this, given the process that was done. I would feel like I was not fulfilling my oath of office. I would feel like I'm not doing my duty to consider first the public interest. And I work basically at the pleasure of the city council. They can just get rid of me tomorrow, you know? But that's, that's their prerogative. But what I'm, I'm saying is, I don't think that I could in good conscience go along with this. But at the same time, I don't think it's, you know, a terrible idea, but I just think it needs to go through the process. My first preference would be to see a revision of downtown specific plan. I think it's due. But, you know, I don't set policy here. None of it's due. But I, I would like to at least see this go through a rational policy. And I would like to see the other businesses that are in the same business that you are have the same opportunity that you do to contemplate moving their business downtown without being blindsided by the fact that, A, it's allowed and boom, you're doing it, you know? So, with that, I think maybe we should do another round of discussion about what people want to recommend that we do here. I, I guess before I do that, I, I will say that I have been listening to the comments of the other commissioners. And looking at this in a, in a more traditional way, I understand the why people want to see this be a conditional use permit. It is all over town and it would be consistent with what we do. And if we make it by right, which is what they're proposing, then you could have 10 competitors on your street. We can't, we can't do anything about it, you know? The way that, that they're proposing it, be great for you. You come downtown, you open your business and then right next door, you've got a competitor. And then two doors down, you've got another competitor. And then five doors down, you've got another competitor. This is an unintended consequence, the way this thing is written. It's written by right, that they can just come in and anybody that wants to can open a tattoo parlor in any, in any shop in that area as defined. And I don't think that's very wise. I'm intrigued by what Vice Chair Brand said about tattooing. Yeah, I think, I think it should be a normal thing, maybe. But maybe it fits with barbers and salons and nail shops and things like that. Maybe that's the kind of thing it should be. Maybe it should be a personal service. We don't, we're not being given the opportunity to make these kind of considerations because the city council is just telling us, hey, you know, approve this, approve it now, make it by right and get it done. I think that there's a lot that, that we could recommend. And I would like, before I started recommending specific things, I would like to have staff go through and make their recommendations. And that would be what, what I would do. Okay, I'm gonna stop now. Does anybody want to take another go at this? As far as specifically how you'd like to, to write up a recommendation? That's just my opinion and I know that others would maybe just want to suggest changes.
You know, oh, man. I'm just gonna ask, I just think that we need to be try not to impugn, impugn people's why they do certain things. Because I really don't know what's in anyone's heart or, you know, I try. We've had, me and you, we've debated back and forth and you know that I got no ill animosity towards you at all, right? And I just think that, you know, people can come down on different sides of something and it's not because they got money or because they knew somebody or anything like that. I'll also say that, you know, we, we have a couple of things coming through the planning commission, drive-throughs, which are amendments. And I've sat here while we made them stricter and stricter. And we have drive-throughs and we have, you know, all sorts of stuff going on that are amendments to, you know, the general plan or the downtown specific plan or various things. This is, this is just another iteration of that, you know, where there's a, something specific happening. I've always been anybody who, you know, you've said, you know, Chris, I've always been this person who always said, let's let the process work. Let's, you know, have future planning commissions have the ability to look at certain things and make decisions. But I've watched how we have, you know, tried to handcuff people, future planning commissions, city council members, to do a certain thing. This is, to me, it's no different. It's just a different item, whether it's tattoo parlor, drive-through. It's the same thing. I really, I just wish we could be careful. And that's all I'm gonna say, is just be careful about impugning people's decision-making, why they're doing what they do. Or, and I'm not saying, it just sounds that way. It feels that way. It makes, it feels that way. And that, that's the only thing I want to say about it. I, I, you know, I express, I have some concerns about the way this thing works. I can see both sides. Literally, I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. I could give you an argument why that tattoo parlor, or not that tattoo parlor, why we should have a downtown specific area, why we should allow tattoo parlors down there. I could give you an argument. I could give you an argument why we shouldn't do it too. I've been thinking about this thing, battling it back and forth in my own mind. I feel like I'm having a tennis match with myself on this particular issue. Because it's not cut and dry, or at least for me. It's not cut and dry. There's a reason we are, we have been over the last, I don't know, we're very, we make stuff very difficult for businesses. And I'm not convinced this is gonna make it any better. You know, you can put different businesses at a disadvantage, but we have been very, we have made things very difficult. And then, you know, I can see why people don't want to make it more difficult. And I can also see why the Downtown Business Coalition would not want to do it, want to stick to the plan. But times change too, and I see that too. You know, you gave a soliloquy about, you know, going all the way back. I mean, 20 years, back to, I forget how many years it went back. No, you know, like back that time, tattoos were like, you know, like, you know, you're in a biker gang and, you know, I can understand why they didn't have it down in, in Brentwood. We were a farming community. Times change. I'm just saying, I am with you guys on process, this, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult. But I am not willing to, you know, throw stones at anybody, any, you know, for any decisions that they made. And I think that we should try to look at this, you know? It's going to go to the council. They requested it. They voted on it. We work for them. We should make They requested it, they voted on it, we work for them, we should make good recommendations. If we, that's how I personally feel. We should make recommendations that enhance their proposal or enhance what they want to do that makes it better for the city, based on all the research. I mean, dang, I always, I always am impressed with Christopher, this guy, he's like, he got like 15 jobs to do all of this stuff. But I'm always impressed by what we do up here, and I think we should make good recommendations, recognizing our position in this. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you.
If I may.
Well, just one second, I just want to reply and then we'll come.
Sure.
Thank you. Chair Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
Wait, 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 did you say Chair?
Yeah, yeah, Chair. I appreciate your comments and I just want to reiterate, in case anybody is unclear, I have no intention to impugn anybody. And I did not mean that in any, any sort of a way to impugn anybody. I'm just saying that, that I would prefer to do the process. And I would like to hear any suggestions for improvement from everybody. We're gonna go to past Chair Roberts now, and that what we're trying to do here is gather, you know, any kind of suggestions and ideas that we can bat around and, sorry, sorry, Chair Johnson, go ahead.
If I may, I'm gonna be very clear about something that Commissioner Johnson said, and I've been up here probably the longest of all of you. We don't make it difficult for businesses to do business in Brentwood. We're careful about who comes into Brentwood to do business with Brentwood, and that is our role up here. The residents trust this commission to do what is right, because they are the ones that I work for. I work for the residents of Brentwood. Yes, I work side by side with city council, but I listen to the residents of Brentwood. So I want to be real clear about that. In the statement about we make it difficult for people to come into Brentwood to do, to do business, I'm looking at business everywhere. I see a hotel going in, I see two coffee shops coming in, I see restaurants coming in. So I don't know that that's an accurate statement. I think that we're careful about who we want to do business with in Brentwood, and I'll leave it at that. At the end of the day, this by right is going to present a problem. It's not the tattoo, I'm not interested in the tattoo, I'm okay with the tattoo parlor. What I'm concerned about is the process. We have processes for a reason. And if you look around at the overgrowth or the fast growth or the no growth or the vacancies, because folks bypassed the process in some of our municipalities, I think of Palo Alto, I think of Oakland. You can go to Walnut Creek now and see a whole lot of that. I will tell you that there is a reason for processes, and we're there to follow the process. Now, if we want to change the process, let's do it right. I'm not saying that, you know, there's anything wrong with what's before us. What I'm saying is that there is a process that we need to follow, and if we don't like the process, there is a process for changing that. But to just handpick and say, well, you know, we're gonna make an exception, and we're gonna make an exception, and we're gonna make an exception, at some point, then why do we have a process? Let's just let anybody and everybody land where they want to land. I am not with that. I didn't move to the city of Brentwood for that, and there are a lot of residents that feel very much the same. For every resident that says one thing, I can find two that say something else. So I want us to be very clear and careful with our words, because I'm pretty sure that the hotel that's building itself out by the streets of Brentwood and the coffee shops that are building themselves out, and some of the restaurants that I see coming into this community would make a very different statement. They work very closely with the planning department, they get along with the planning department. We do our part here as commissioners to make sure that all of the designs that are going into these locations reflect well for the citizens of Brentwood and for the city of Brentwood. So yes, I think somebody got ahead of themselves and decided that they would bypass the process, and for that, I'm troubled. Because if one person can do that, anyone can do that. And now we're gonna have a legal problem. And that's the thing that nobody wants to talk about, is the legality to this. It's not about the tattoo parlor, it's about the process. They're there for a reason. And if we're gonna buck the process, then let's be, let's get ready as taxpayers to deal with what happens next. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I, I don't disagree with a lot of what my fellow commissioners have said tonight. I have concerns about the process. I have concerns about some of the things that Chair Flor brought up that I agree with him on. The things that Commissioner Johnson have said, I see that too. For me, I, I want to, I think it's important to kind of stay within the scope of what it is we're being asked to do tonight. I don't, I don't disagree with what is being said. But that being said, the majority council spoke, we have to listen. Now, there can be arguments to push back on that and say, no, we don't, because they didn't follow the process. And I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with that. But on the flip side, I think it's up to us tonight to take what has been put in front of us and come back to them with what it is we think we should do. Maybe we recommend a conditional use permit. Maybe we say, cap the number of tattoo parlors in the downtown core. I'm open to those discussions, right? But I, I'm not there on, you know, basically just sending it back. And if I misunderstood that, correct me, but I, I don't, I'm not comfortable going there. I think we need to have a discussion around what types of conditions we should put or recommend, right, to the council, and let them decide on whether or not they want to do it or not. Right? So I, I don't disagree with what's being said tonight, but I also want to be careful with the scope of which, what it is we're being asked to, to, to take into account. And I'm worried that if we go a little outside of that, I just don't know how, how well reflected that is. So, so I'm, I'm not done with the discussion, I'm open to hearing more, but I do think we need to have a discussion around what we recommend to the council is in terms of the direction they gave. We can have the, you know, the arguments around whether or not those discussions or that direction that they gave to us was correct or incorrect. Either way, it's the majority. That's what they asked for, I think we have to deliver on that. And that's what I would like to really, I would like to do. I would like to explore the idea of whether or not a conditional use permit is appropriate for this particular item, whether we strengthen the administrative design review process and make amendments to that. I'm open to that discussion. But I, I don't know if I want to just kind of send it back. And if I, if I misunderstood that, please correct me, but I, I'd like to take it to where I think we were, what we were asked to do tonight. So I'd just leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And I do want to point out that I've been asking for suggestions for changes and so far I haven't heard any. So we'll move on to Vice Chair Brand.
Yeah, thank you for keeping us on track, Commissioner Jones. Let's, I'm setting the intention right now that we're gonna avoid another round if at all possible, just to, for all our sake, it's 9:05, so just putting that out there for now. I'm just, I went back to the E1 resolution to say, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance approving a text amendment to the downtown specific plan to allow for tattoo parlors. And so this is a question of what text amendment would we like to provide that specifically relates to the, is it an allow use, is it a cup, is it a, is it a distance thing, is it any of these types of variables? Now, you know, Commissioner Roberts commenting on this, the weight of the process to which we followed, and I think there's an argument to be made that, you know, anytime you multiply something by zero, it's always zero. If you fundamentally disagree with how we got there, it's, you know, you can never get there because, or you can never get an answer because you're always gonna be at zero. I'd like to hopefully keep us on track with this because, yeah, city council is asking that of us, and they voted in a majority to ask us to provide a recommendation that best aligns with what our perspective is with respect to this particular use. So, that being said, I had articulated earlier that I think that the, the continued prohibition of tattoo parlors is consistent with the DSP's goal, as well as the, the greater business population of the downtown areas economic growth, to maintain it that way. And so in this case, I would, I'm more strongly considering the rejecting a text amendment to the DSP for that reason. And so that would be essentially what, we vote, we, there's a name for it, I can't remember every time this comes up where you have to rewrite our resolution, but we just kind of flip it around. But, you know, so I would like to start there. I think there's, there, you know, as Commissioner Jones commented, there are arguments to consider a cup for this type of use. And as, you know, Commissioner Johnson commented, like, that would be more uniform with the rest of the city. That's, that's certainly, you know, if you're talking fair application. But as of right now, if we don't really have any, you know, in the absence of any specific agreed upon amendments, I'd be ready to make a motion here. But I, I just, I do, I know, I think a few of you haven't spoken again yet, so it is only fair that some of you get to go around again, so.
I want to, I want to stick to what you just said about trying to move this thing along. Just a quick question, when they, when they, the council came up with this right now in the DSP, it's a prohibited use, correct? I'm looking at page 73, it's a prohibited use, correct?
Correct.
And did they discuss, and I'm sorry, I'm not as, I, I, I'm trying to be, I look, did they discuss having a CUP, as Commissioner, Commissioner Jones mentioned?
You know, I don't recall specifically if that came up. It, it may have, I don't remember, but.
Because I, I would, I'm personally with, as Commissioner Jones said, about the direction we're given, because if you just take it through the process, what's gonna happen is whatever we do is gonna get, would get overruled in the process if we, you know, just, you know, just decided we wanted to do something else. So I want to contribute to, you know, make, make something better or maybe something in that regard than to just try to override what's that. So I don't know if the CUP is okay, but I, that at least would make it consistent throughout the city, and we would then allow it, and it, it wouldn't be a prohibited use. So that would be my only question.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, let me take that back slightly. It's been a while since I, I was at the meeting, I went back and watched it, but my memory is fading by the minute, just in life in general, so. But I just wanted to say, the, since the specific direction was to allow them as permitted use, as a permitted use, I'm pretty sure the idea or notion of requiring a CUP came up, and that's not where the council landed.
Okay. Then what about Commissioner Jones's other recommendation about the administrative process behind the scenes?
Strengthening it, essentially adding, yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, I think there's a lot of options that the Planning Commission has tonight in terms of what the resolution ends up looking like and what the recommendation actually is to the council. I don't know if Brittany would want to weigh in at some point based on what those changes look like, if there are any, you know, sort of legal background or legal implications to consider, but we can certainly craft the resolution according to the consensus of the commission.
Yeah, and I, I would just add that from a legal perspective, this particular proposal from staff is what's already been reviewed by the legal team and has, with that, any additional, you know, burdens or conditions or standards that would be placed would probably need to be reviewed additionally. But the recommendation could still be made today for council to consider those different standards and, of course, go through the traditional legal process to make sure, you know, everything is in order.
So far, I have suggestions, maybe reject the amendment, maybe make it a conditional use permit, maybe strengthen the administrative review. I wrote down, maybe just lift the prohibition because the point was made that currently it's a prohibition, so something might happen there. And then, of course, my own recommendation is similar to rejecting the amendment as to ask the council to go back and give it to staff to build it from the bottom up, which I think is the right way to do it. In which case, then staff could bring it to us and, and then at that point in time, we could, I don't know. Let's, let's continue going down the row. Commissioner Jones, do you have any additional items that you would want to put on this list?
You know, I think, again, whether it's through the conditional use permit or strengthening the ADR, I mean, I think these are some things to consider. Capping the number of tattoo parlors. Probably already a part of this, correct me if I'm wrong, with site and building design, just making sure they fit with the surrounding buildings, they blend with the downtown aesthetic as in terms of, you know, what you're seeing through the windows and stuff like that. I would think that's already a part of it, but, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't quite see that. I think, you know, signage and branding, although I think, again, that falls in with ADR, so I may be just repeating what's already there, but being careful with the, with the signage and making sure that we're just encouraging high-quality signage. You know, another thought that I was thinking, you know, just kind of going back to the art and culture component of this, and, you know, I think tattoo artists, they view themselves as, they view themselves as artists, right? I mean, I think that's a fair assessment. You know, maybe encouraging the tattoo parlors to incorporate like local art into their space, whether it's murals, designs, you know, something like that. Promoting community events like, you know, art showcases, workshops. I think from, you know, a public safety and security standpoint, you know, strengthening the administrative design review process. Again, I'm trying to stay within the scope of what the majority asked us, not saying I agree or disagree with what the majority said. I just think we have to stay within that. I, I get what's being said tonight, and I want to emphasize that because I'm trying to not put personal emotion into this and just stick to what has been handed to us. So, you know, I'll stop there to see if there's anything that I'm off base on, if anybody wants to push back, because if there isn't a majority, then of course, you know, I won't continue.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And past Chair Roberts, do you have anything you want to put on the list? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, real quick, can I just say, on a procedural level, because this has happened a few times at meetings as well, we're not exactly sure where the commission's gonna be going at this point, and it could go a number of different directions. So what I would recommend is, once a motion is made, right, and there is a second to that motion, we would then take a quick break to modify the resolution accro- we would then take a quick break to modify the resolution accordingly, come back, display that, you know, run through it, make sure the commission understands exactly what that means and what that looks like, and then take the vote on it. If for some reason that vote doesn't pass, we would do the same thing on a subsequent motion. Does that make sense?
It does, and I really appreciate that. I don't think we're at that point yet. We still have a list, a little, this little list, I think we can do a little bit more work on, but when we get there, for sure.
Chair Flor, may I ask a clarifying question to Mr. Nolte? Just back on that CUP deal, so you would say that would change their, the council's intent?
Would I say that would change the council's intent?
Yes.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
For simplicity's sake, you know, we're, I think this is the shortest packet we've had, at least since I've been on commission. Forty-five pages, that's impressive. Anyway, we've been given a simple question, which in this case, I think a simple answer is warranted. Now, through that, it can just be a simple yes or no. And we can add a lot of tinsel on it as well to, you know, change this and change this. But, and I don't, as you described, I don't want to jump to conclusions as far as what the intent of our council was, but at least what we're being presented with. So I, I think this is just a yes or no at this rate. It's, do we want to allow this? Do we want to remove this from the prohibited list? I guess that's a better way of saying it. Yes or no? So if, unless we, I'm not seeing any substantial movement in any of these more nuanced aspects of it. So if we can provide a recommendation to City Council that says, you know, planning, your, your planning commissioners have potentially disagreed that prohibition is, sorry, that making this a permitted use is how we should proceed, then that's, that's the, that's essentially how we do it. It's pretty straightforward. And if they want to come up with a more nuanced means of providing a, you know, do we want to do a, do we want to widen the scope and say that like certain businesses throughout the downtown, you know, you need quantity, you know, we've, that's been a thing before where you say there's a quantity of certain businesses or these businesses have to be within a certain distance of one another. Certain businesses have to be complementary and create objective criteria that meet that. That, that wasn't the ask here. This was simply, do we want to have this, yes or no? So I, and so I'm ready to make a motion. And I think, I know Eric has commented that we probably should take a pause, but, yeah, Chair Flor, sorry.
Before we do that, and before people start considering that, I just wanted to pick up on a couple of these things. As far as the signage and branding, we already have a sign ordinance. Is there something that the sign ordinance doesn't do that you wanted to do? You want to, I mean, we can't really control the imagery, I mean, it's free expression, right? So, but we can't control all the things that sign ordinance does, control size of the signs, placement of the signs, number of signs, that's all, that's all in the municipal code.
Correct, yeah, and I would leave it at that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take that one off. And I would say the same thing about safety. There's, there's no building in Brentwood that's not required to meet safety standards as far as I know. Am I, am I correct in that, Eric? Safety is, is already built in.
Yeah, correct.
All businesses, so let's take that out. Capping the number. I'm not sure we can do that. This is getting into something that. Well, I can leave it on the list for now. So other than that, strengthening the admin review as far as signage and safety. I mean, I don't know what we can, and staff kind of knows what businesses can and can't do here in general. And commercial properties, I don't, I don't know if there's anything that specifically is, was there something else specifically?
The goal was to open up a discussion.
Okay.
And to try and keep us on the path of what the majority council asks us to do.
All right. Fair enough. And. So then, the one, what I want to mention to Vice Chair Brand is that if we did move to, you know, reject the amendment or recommend that they not do it, I do think that including our logic for why we did it would make them have something to discuss, to think about. Because if we say, well, we just, we don't agree and we don't tell them why, that makes it really easy to ignore. You know, I think that, that we have to say something. I mean, I've got the things that I've said about why it should go through the process. And Past Chair Roberts has said why she thinks it should go through the process. And I, I think that if we, if we were going to make a motion to, to not pass it or to not, to not recommend it, then we should probably say why, if, if that makes sense.
I think we've done that once before, where there's a kind of, there's a bulleted list beneath it to indicate reasonings behind it. I don't recall the last item in which something like this happened, but I'm wondering if we. Yeah, I mean, obviously, the best source of the context would be watching this meeting, which I hope they all do or are watching right now, for that level of depth and context that I think is, is really necessary with a sensitive item like this. And so, you know, I, at least top of mind for me right now is that it's like, yes, if, if we proceed as is, I would suggest that, yeah, the Planning Commission has, you know, something to the effect that the Planning Commission has concerns with regards to the, I'll call it à la carte nature of an amendment to a foundational document with, that is contained within our general plan and that it's important that a large group of the populace is allowed to, or has the ability to make suggestions and such so that more than just a singular business or other residential or what have you entity could be impacted. And so as, as to your point, Commissioner John says, the idea that there are unintentional consequences. So when we make, you know, make one little turn, sometimes the whole thing breaks, right? And so, not, not to, not to put words in your mouth, I'm just, I'm just trying to make a simile here. So all that to say, I think, I think our comments are uniform, at least from what I've heard as far as, for the most part, our encouragement to City Council to potentially consider the idea that maybe in a, they're going to do what they want with this particular thing, is that they consider the possibility that this document does need some type of larger revision. And that, you know, I think this, this commission is also intentional on the idea of amending to some degree with regards to tattoo uses, or as I call them, personal services. So I, I think we could, Eric, I think we can contain that all into a singular motion so that that message is escalated to City Council. I don't know if that's the right way to say it, but that's what's coming to mind.
Yeah, and I don't know if this totally answers your question. I don't know how Brittany feels about this, but I was looking back at the, sorry, it was the December 3rd meeting from last year. And that's when staff presented the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance relative to ADUs. So everybody was on the commission save for Commissioner Jones. And at that time, the commission was concerned about the scope of the changes and what ultimately happened was the commission declined to make a recommendation. So this was, I was still researching that, but I don't believe there was a resolution that was actually adopted. The commission simply said, we're not making a recommendation. And then that was forwarded to the council for its consideration at its public hearing.
Right, I, I remember that vividly. Thank you for using that as an, as an example of what I was trying to recall. So yes, that, that, as, you know, to this commission, that, that is an example of a, of an option to proceed. And it's essentially taken our hands off the wheel ultimately. So is that like an abstain vote? Sure, but, you know, we, we all have to, we have to decide on, on our individual level what we feel is most appropriate. And as you said, even regardless of, if we agree with what the, what the resolution from City Council was, we have to agree upon something that is in response, or provides some type of recommendation and/or no recommendation at all. So. Yeah, maybe Chair Flor, why don't I give you a chance to respond and then?
Okay, well, first off is, I'm not feeling very warm about declining to make a recommendation. I, I think that that just, it gives, it gives the City Council no sense of where, where we're at. Again, I think that I have reasons for my reservations and I could go into those now, but I, I do think, Past Chair Roberts, did you, did you want to weigh in? I know you have some reasons that, do you have some wording or do you want to let me have some? Mike?
Beat you to it. I for one would like to see this move forward, but I don't like the way it was presented. I really would like to see it move forward. I don't support spot zoning, that's what I, I see this as. But I would like to figure out a way that we can move it forward. And if that is an administrative design review tightening that up, that would be great. I don't want to set a precedent that we'll see more of this coming from City Council. I want it to go through its normal process and procedures, as has been the past for as long as we've been in the city of Brentwood as a planning commission. And this is out of sort. So that's where my dilemma is. I, I will join Commissioner Jones in, in tightening up some of the design review to try to move this forward. But I want the caveat for sure to reflect that we cannot consider doing things like this as the new normal. Because if this is our new normal, then I, I have a feeling we're going to run into some serious issues or the planning commissions that come after us. We are setting a precedent. So, that being said, subject to administrative design review or tightening it up might be the best way to move this forward, but I must tell you that it does not make me feel comfortable. I'm not comfortable, but I do want, let me be clear. Whatever we do, City Council is going to do what they want to do regardless. I'm aware of that based on how this was presented to us. And that's unfortunate because we're supposed to be working as a team and not be, and this seems very fragmented. But I would prefer that we give them something to, to work with. And if that's, I'm not comfortable with the cup because that stands forever. But I am comfortable tightening up the administrative piece and, and, and moving forward on that. With the caveat that spot zoning is something that I'm not comfortable with.
May I, Chair Flor, may I? Mr. Nolte, is it possible, considering what Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Jones said, is it possible to say we, I guess, you know, make a motion to endorse this deal with these recommendations, with the recommendations of the administrative overview? Is that, can that fall in the line?
Yes, of course. I mean, it's going to, it's going to depend on what those additional standards, you know, look like and how they read, but we would reflect that in the resolution. And then when it goes to the council for consideration, they'll be aware of that. And again, ultimately, it's going to be the council's decision, but we certainly want them to know what took place tonight and what the commission's recommendation is.
Commissioner Jones, what were the administrative enhancements that you had in mind?
I was hoping to have a good discussion around that. Because, you know, I'm, I, I want to be mindful of the administrative design review process, but I, I want to just at minimum entertain the idea of adding some additional things that might alleviate some concerns out there that residents have, you know? It was a 3-2 vote by the City Council, so there is some contentiousness there. And I would love to try and bring, you know, that in, onto the table to try and find a middle ground, right? So I, I'm, I, I had, I started to kind of list some things. Thank you, Chair Flor. I know, again, a lot of those things are probably already in there and, and it sounds like there's maybe some things that we cannot do. And if that's, if that's fine, right? But I'm, I'm throwing those out really more as a discussion point to try and understand what, where, what additional things we could do to try and get to the middle here. So I, I'm open to any suggestions that anyone has as in terms of what they think might accomplish that.
Okay. So I'm listening to all of this. We, we don't really have a lot of consensus here. I just want to remind you guys what I was proposing that we do. I was proposing that we ask the City Council to send this back to staff. Let staff work it from the ground up, then bring it to us. So, because for us to sit here and try to imagine things like, oh, what would be, you know, some good ways to strengthen the admin review? Well, like, we're, we're kind of doing staff work from the DAS and I don't like, I don't support that. What I, what I believe is that staff would be best able to come up with these kinds of suggestions for improvement. And that's, that's another reason why I suggest to go back to staff. You know, if it was me, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea of just rejecting the amendment outright, but I, I think a better reason, a better way to, to proceed, given what everybody has said. I've heard, let's just tell them we don't want it. I've heard, let's make some changes, but we're kind of fuzzy about how to do that. And I've, I've heard that, you know, like, maybe we should just send it on. But to me, I think that if we send it back to staff, if the City Council will relinquish, send it back to staff, let staff work it up the right way. And I've, I've heard that from Eric and I think I agree with that. Let staff work it up and come back. And I, the only thing that I would ask of staff is that, is that whatever they design would be something that would be passed but come into effect so that the public had sufficient notice so other people that want to take advantage, if, if there is new zoning downtown, other businesses that might want to have that business would have enough advance notice so that they could also participate. So that would be. So, that would be, if I was going to make a motion, I'm tempted. Rather than just reject it outright, I would say, "We think that the process is wrong." And I've heard Commissioner Roberts say that, I've said that, that the correct way to do this is to first send it to staff, get staff recommendations, then let it come back through the normal process to the planning commission so that we can see the staff recommendation. So, if, I think, you know, if there is something staff sees in there that could be strengthened, they could strengthen it, or if there's not, you know, let's see what they can, they can do. I mean, it's what they're, what they do, that's their job. That's like how they, they know what to do, right? We don't. And that's why I'm making that suggestion. And because, again, I think that the whole process is wrong. I don't, I don't, I don't approve of doing this at all for just one business. Like I said, I think that there's a slippery slope. But if I feel like the city council has the votes to do it, I just would like to see them do it the right way and send it to staff first. Say, "Okay, you know, we want to allow, we don't want to have a prohibition on tattoos anymore downtown." What would staff look at and see what they want, how they would recommend moving forward with that? Let's take that input and work with that. Because the input that we have right now is, it's going to be by right, and that's it. And I don't, I don't think that the council has completely thought through the implications of that. And so, like I said, if I was going to make a motion, that's the motion that I would do. I would, I would move that we make a recommendation to the city council to send it back to staff, let it, let the request be generally processed just as a request to lift the prohibition on tattoo. And then let staff go and gather the information, and they can talk to the DBC. And they can consider these ideas, "Well, is it like a hair salon?" They can consider everything because that's what they do. And so, I, I don't know.
Isn't that what happened, though? I think I heard, didn't it, isn't that they sent, they made a, they made a recommendation, the staff went back for four months? Did I mishear something? I don't know.
No, and I was just going to say that it's, this has been such an interesting process. And I know there's discomfort on the part of the planning commission. I totally understand that. It's difficult for staff at times, too, because we're put in a position to, you know, move something forward based on direction. And, but to your point, Mr. Johnson, that's exactly what happened. So, it was brought up at the end of January. There was consensus in terms of a unanimous vote at that time that the council wanted to look into it in more detail. But there was no decision made as to what that would actually look like. So, when it came back at the end of May, four months later, that's when the council kind of got into the minutia of what it might look like and where you ended up with the split vote to allow it as a permitted use, which is, you know, why we're talking about it again tonight.
Eric? At the time, I don't, I don't remember, did you, did you submit a proposed resolution at that time? Do you, did you have wording from staff?
No, so that was, that was council discussion from the dais. There was no resolution that was adopted. It was just a motion directing staff to amend it and to allow them as a permitted use.
And was the instruction to include by right permitting as opposed to? So, that was not by staff, that was city council?
That was city council, yeah. And Brittany, did you have anything you wanted to add as well?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to add that the city council did direct staff to include, one, I don't want to, it's not, it's a condition, I guess, or a standard for the administrative design review, which was compliance with the Safe Body Art Act. And staff prepared the proposed changes to put some requirements in there to make sure that we were ensuring compliance with the Safe Body Art Act. So, that is the one condition that the council directed staff to include already.
All right. And, I'm sorry, Chair person Flor, just one other thing real quick. I didn't go through this in detail during my original presentation, but on pages two and three of the staff report for this item, there is some discussion about what occurred at the January 28 council meeting. And there's a, basically a bolded list of items that the council brought up at that time that they, you know, wanted more information on, that they were concerned about. And they specifically wanted to have some information about, you know, pros and cons and economic development impacts, et cetera. And so, again, that's what happened in, in May.
Okay. So, you know, I did read through the resolution and the red line. So, you've done all the research and you've, you've had a stab at it. So, I'm thinking it probably wouldn't take a huge amount of staff effort to just go through and make sure that, I don't know. I, I think I'm kind of leaning back more towards, with all of this discussion, I'm leaning back towards Commissioner Brand's idea to maybe just reject it. And, but I do want to, I would like to give the reason that we feel like, or at least I feel like is probably the most important thing, is that we shouldn't be making, we shouldn't be making rezones on, at the behest of a single business. We should be making rezones because they're, they're good policy. And we, you know, and again, and because it creates the hazard that this is how we'll do business going forward. And then people will start coming to individual city council members asking for things. And that's what we don't want to see, so. Or is that a little overstepping? Or maybe we should just read, you know, like, make a motion to reject?
Real quick, before any of that happens, I was just reading through, as Eric was describing, the bulleted points that were in reference to the questions that were raised from council. It's stuff like "Our tattoo studios, the highest and best use of downtown. Would a comprehensive update to this downtown specific plan be a better option? City prefer potentially taking property, space away from other businesses." These are all questions we've answered tonight. At least, I feel like I, in some capacity, have answered most of these questions from my perspective. I don't, I'm not sure if everyone else shares that perspective or has a perspective. But nonetheless, I think we have answered a lot of those questions. So, thus, I think our, our decision is inclusive of all of those questions that council has for this particular area. So, that being said, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. So, let's say we make a motion to, I make a motion to, always say, reject resolution number 25-012, recommending that the city council do not adopt an ordinance approving an amendment to the downtown specific plan and the Brentwood municipal code to allow for tattoo parlors. Probably need to mess with the verbiage there a little bit, though. I don't know, maybe Brittany can wordsmith that in a way that's?
So, just to clarify the, oh.
So, I know that there's a motion on the floor. Is there any way that you can take that motion and add to it until it is brought back to the commission through its normal process? In other words, I hear what he's just said. I don't want us to go so fast into rejecting something that if it were presented appropriately, we might have considered it as a, a plus. So, I'm hearing what you're saying, and I'm wondering if we can tell city council, yeah, we can't, we can't accept it right now, the way it is being presented to us today. However, consider whether it's the administrative piece or the CUP or something else and bring it back to us. I want to give them some direction, but the way it's being presented here, it, they're kind of, I, I can't see how we can move forward with this. So, I'm looking for a little guidance on the language. Because I happen to support what you've just said, but I want to go more into, how do we move forward in making it a yes, sending it to city council for them to take another looksee and say, "Okay, yeah, let's, let's not be so quick to set a precedent here that could present problems in the future." It's not even, for me, it's not about the tattoo, Paul, it's about, about the way it's being presented.
So, do you want to accept that as a friendly amendment? Or do you?
I'm just looking for some language.
It, just to understand it carefully, I believe that we are providing a recommendation by rejecting the staff recommendation of allowing as a permitted use. So, we are providing that, but I think, as Chair Flor described before, the specifics as to why that is, I think, are contained in our deliberation in the last two and a half hours or so, answering all of the questions that were brought forward here that came in the last several meetings. So, I think the context is there, and I think the considerations that we've established are also there. So, to me, at least, the why related to this motion is contained in this meeting that we've just had. So, I'm not, I'm personally not as concerned about communicating that through specific words in the motion. I think it's, I think in this case, that it's important that council watches our videos so that they are fully informed with what our opinions are comprehensively. So, that's my perspective here. So, I know we have a motion on the, on the table here. I'll, I invite a second.
I'm sorry, you were in the middle of talking to legal about the wording.
Yeah, I just, I think, I know we had, Eric, you had commented that the, having a brief recess, if we can, you know, obviously, once we get a, a second would warrant a brief recess so that a resolution could be, yeah, proceed with.
Say what?
Yes.
I said, "Do we have a second?"
Well, I'm sorry, just real quick. I want to make sure I understand the motion clearly. So, you're not, you don't want to decline to make a recommendation. The recommendation is to actually not move forward with the amendment, right? So, it's a, it's not a neutral, it's a, "Don't do it."
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So, however the wordage is for that would be my, would be the motion effectively.
And then there were, just to clarify, no listing of the reasons why that recommendation is being made. Vice Chair Brand, is that what you, was included in your motion?
I mean, it would be great if we could get, you know, because this is an item that is a recommendation to council, is that part of the staff report, at least a chunk of the staff report, probably would summarize this meeting here today and include, unless we have things that are so categorically important that we guarantee or we absolutely want to have included in that staff report that way that certain points get over, you know, get communicated directly versus more passively through various comments we've made individually.
So, I, I think that I'm feeling a little bit more agreement on just the, the basic motion than everybody's reasons why. So, I'm kind of going with Commissioner Brand, and we probably don't need a list because we have, we all have, like, different reasons and we've all expressed them.
I know there's a motion on the floor, so Commissioner Brand, please, please, give me just a little grace. One last question, I think I saw an email about having, if we did approve it, that maybe it can be on the second floor of a building, rather on the ground floor? Is that something we?
Go ahead.
Well, let's, let's get through the motion first, and then if we, if we don't, if we don't pass, we can go for additional. But we need a second. Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, so, so before, before the commission takes a vote, can, can you then grant staff just a few minutes to sort of huddle up and figure out what the resolution would look like? Because if we're adopting a motion specifically to, you know, reject the amendment, we want to memorialize that. So, it might be a fairly short resolution, actually, but I want to be able to figure that out with Brittany.
Absolutely, let's take, let's take, what do you, 10, 15 minutes? Or we just, we'll just take a recess.
Yeah, we'll shoot for 10.
Okay. So done, we're going to take a recess.
You know, it would have been really cool, but we can't dictate to the people how we want to see their shop set up. I don't want to get caught up in that. But it would have been very cool because this is a form of.
You can't discuss the.
Oh, I can?
Yeah.
Oh. Did you hit, wait a minute, did you just slap that, that gavel?
I did, I gavel.
Did you gavel me? I'm getting ready to pop you upside your head.
I need it, your mic is on.